District is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Um, I will move on. Is, has the meeting been properly ver- properly posted?
Yes, it was posted on the LMASD website and at the Lake Mills post office and submitted to the Lake Mills leader.
All right, then we will have everyone rise that are able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its freedom of speech, justice, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well now we can welcome all to this meeting. I request a roll call for attendance.
Brianna Beslik, here.
Ken Imers.
Here.
Andrea Graham.
Here.
Kirk Lund.
Here.
Amy Litcher.
Here. Are there any revisions to the agenda by any board members, including any removal of or separating out of any consent agenda section action items?
I'll move the board approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, I will have a roll call vote.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Andrea Graham.
Aye.
Kirk Lund.
Aye.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye. Moving on to board reports, I'll turn it over to Ms. Beslish with for a policy committee.
Yes, we met for our policy committee meeting and this is just a first reading of all of those policies. And most of them, as you can see, kind of in that volume notes line, are just things that were added based on updated processes or things that had to do with DPI changes or things that were with some changes within the Supreme Court that then, you know, added some language differences here and there for things. So nothing overly crazy. You can kind of look through all of those. If you have any questions, we can talk more about that. But just some, some very simple changes to what they're doing. There's one that we pulled from the revision so that we can take some more time to really look at and make sure that it's matching and intertwining with what we have within our policy. But yeah, you can find the changes attached.
All right, any questions?
Yeah, I had one. Excuse me. In the case where a lot of the policies always refer back to the district administrator for things. And this came up for me when I was thinking about the, um, the policy about a non-student guest car in the, in the lot. If, if someone, if the district administrator were not able to be reached right away, is there some, like a built-in next person type thing?
Yeah, I mean, that goes for if I'm on vacation as well. There's always, you know, we make sure we always designate kind of the second in command. And usually it's one of the district office administrators. So, you know, depending on, you know, Jamie or Erin's role and what the question would be, one of those two would handle something on the student side of things. If it's anything that's more buildings and grounds or financially related, then Tasha would make the decision for those.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none, we will move on to the, Mr. Imers with clerk for correspondence.
Thank you. Yes, we, we got a nice note from the Yandre family. It reads, "Words cannot express the feeling in our hearts. Thank you for being with us during this difficult time. Your thoughts and prayers and words of sympathy will always be remembered. The Todd Yandre family."
All right, we will move on to our student representative, Liliana Gesko.
Okay, so right now we're in the spring sports season, so there is a lot of sports going on. I'll start off with baseball. They're actually playing a game in New Glarus probably right now. They have a game in Waterloo tomorrow. And then this weekend, they have an overnight tournament in the Dells and they are currently two and one. Softball is also playing a game today at Belleville. They are home tomorrow and at Luther Prep on Thursday. And then on Friday, they're at Marshall and they are one and one. Soccer, we are two and oh. We have a game tomorrow at Lakeside and a game Thursday at Fort. And then we have a tournament this Saturday and we're hosting. Golf, their first meet was last Saturday and they chose not to comment on it. I think they actually had something today, JV, I think. And then tomorrow they have a meet at Monroe and a mini-meet at Columbus on Thursday. Track is doing lots of meets. I know they had a few already. At the last one, the boys took third, or no, they took third at their first invite. The girls took seventh. I got some notable wins, what should be JP in the 100, AJ Creachy in the pole vault with 11 feet, Savannah Overhouse in the two mile. And then they have a meet tomorrow at Cambridge and an invitational meet at Cambridge as well on Thursday. Moving on from sports, the spring play is this weekend. It is Ghost Chasers. On Friday and Saturday, they are hosting at seven and Sunday it'll be put on at two. The weekend after this, we have prom, so we're all very excited. The weekend after that is state solo ensemble and right before that is state forensics. And Mr. Angel did say that we had about 18 entries this year, so we're very excited for that. Other than sports and those notable things, all the seniors are definitely feeling the pressure for senior portfolios which are due tomorrow. I know I'm going to go put my finishing touches on it right after this, but we're all very excited to graduate and very sad to leave, but it's a good time. And we're very, we all feel very supported and happy to be in this school district. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a question? Would you be able to tell us just a quick overview what the senior portfolio is and what it kind of looks like?
So I am not a big fan of it, probably because it did take me a lot. I like things looking very professional. And so I, as well as my three friends over here, are putting in a lot of effort into it and making it look very nice. It consists of like a personal statement. Actually have the list up here right now. A tr- your transcript, your resume, your post-high school plans, kind of like a final reflection paper of everything that you've done in high school. And then we do this learning thing called Zello. I'm not really sure what it is, but I know that we've been doing it for all of high school. I think we actually started in middle school. And let me tell you, the seniors are kind of not that great at it. At least, I don't really know of any other advisories other than mine that have been on top of it, but we kind of just got it done in the beginning of the year. Cause it's just kind of learning about your future and the majority of us kind of know maybe what we want to do. So it can be very helpful, I think, if you are undecided. But as someone who has known what she's wanted to be since seventh grade, it was kind of just like, okay, let's get this done. But I don't know, it was definitely very helpful and, I mean, I connect, it said, all my results said that I connected with my career choice. So that was very validating, very happy about that. And then also for the portfolio, you have to choose 10 assignments or things that you've done in high school. For me, it's all just like tests and quizzes that I've taken. But some of my friends have put in like their varsity letters or their like job that they got that they're proud of. And you just write a little paragraph reflection on it and why, why you're proud of it or what it means to you. And then you put it all together and as we just learned, or as I just learned today, we have a community member, not a teacher overlook it and you chat about it and that's your exit interview. So I'm not quite sure what the point of it is, but I think, I don't know, maybe it's helpful for the community members or something.
Well, I think too, post, post-high school, you may have to do a portfolio and things for different programs that you do. So I do think it sounds like good preparation for.
Yeah, it could definitely be.
Your career. But the other thing, Tanya, I was going to ask you, is this something that all, like is this a state of Wisconsin requirement or a Lake Mills?
Not for the portfolio, but several high schools do require that as part of the graduation portion of that. So like with the Zello piece, that's part of academic and career planning through the state that is required. And it does start at the sixth grade level across the state of Wisconsin. But right, I mean, you'll see high schools either require some type of portfolio or a community service or this, you know, that's where you see the differences. I was kind of noting before that I said selfishly, because I do sit on a lot of portfolio conversations. I use it as feedback, you know, from the students when they graduate as far as, you know, things that worked well for them during their middle school and high school career and things, you know, potentially that could be changed. It also helps me understand where students are going for our college and career development as well. It's, those conversations is when we really made the push for the early college credit, you know, when we started to notice that maybe students weren't utilizing that as much, so.
So it goes both ways, definitely the benefits, so.
I think there's always ways to improve things and we'll definitely keep working with the school counselors on that.
Thank you. Yeah, I would say it's kind of beneficial, but it's also really stressful if you put it off to the last minute, which you know 99% of the senior class is going to do, so I don't know. It's, it's very 50/50 for me, but yeah.
Spoken like a true senior in April.
All right, thank you so much. Ah, moving on to administrative reports, Dr. Olson.
All right, so with that, it's my pleasure to introduce our representatives from the newly inducted National Honor Society. So with us today, we have Jeremiah Legal, Shil Gupta, Casey Everson, and Liliana Gesko. And they are going to share some information about the National Honor Society, so welcome.
Good evening. First off, just want to thank you all for having us. Thank you for everything you do for our district and our community. We really, we really can't say thank you enough. We appreciate that. Again, my name is Jeremiah. I am the president of NHS, National Honor Society at Lake Mills High School. And we've got a few other board members here and Avery Chilson, our vice president, could not make it tonight. She is in softball, but that's our board. That's our, our close leadership group. We just want to give you a quick overview of what we've done this year, what we find important and what has helped us grow. So to start, I will give you the four pillars of National Honor Society and what that means to me personally. So it's based upon scholarship, service, leadership, and character. And they're on the backs of our shirts, but that's what we really try to stick to the whole year through what we do. We have a lot of freedom in what we choose to do throughout the school year, what programs, fundraisers, events, what we want to help in the community or the school. So I think I like that aspect a lot. We can stay true to our values and decide what we want to put our time into. I think that's really important. And I think that's something that's going to be really important for next year's group especially. We had 17 seniors this year. I think that's a little bit smaller of a group, but next year is going to have 31. So that's, I mean, that's almost double. So I think they'll have a, a ton of things they will be able to do with double the size. I think that's really important. They were just inducted about a few weeks back officially into NHS, which was a really neat ceremony to take part in and lead. Yeah, so I've got a few board members that are going to share a bit about what we've done this year. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shil Gupta. Nice to be back here again. I wanted to talk a little bit about Veterans Day. Each year NHS organizes a Veterans Day ceremony. And yes, we honor the veterans in the community, but I think we honor veterans as a whole in the country as well. We have pretty much every single student as well as our faculty members be a part of the ceremony as an audience. And we contact veterans who are residents of Lake Mills and some of them are even faculty members, which is great. So we get to see that representation. Yeah, we have them, we have them come over and we really honor them. We talk about the history of Veterans Day and why we celebrate it. And we try to hear as many stories as we can from the veterans. So like the student body really gets to understand what veterans experience throughout their service. I think the experience as a whole is really great for both sides. Us organizing the, the event and also the audience, because we kind of get to flex our public speaking skills and also kind of develop them at the same time, which is just a great, like killing two birds with one stone type of situation. And yeah, and everyone in the audience really gets to respect these veterans. And I think any, any person in America can respect the service that veterans do for us and the sacrifice that they really give. It's also a great time for the music students because for me, like I'm in choir. We get to sing, they start singing a banner, four-part harmony. It's really fun. And then the band gets to sing, not sing, sorry, gets to play a service song for the veterans. And yeah, I think seeing those veterans stand up for what they believe in, it really does leave a lasting impact on the community. And we've gotten really good feedback from the students as well as community members. So I think it's a really positive experience for all. And I do want to give a little shout out to Mrs. Weldon over there because she helps us plan and organize the ceremony. And I believe it was the first time that she had ever done it and we had a lot of praise from it. So just a big shout out to her. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm sure you all know by now, but I'm Liliana Gesko. So one of the events that we did this year was Christmas Neighbors. Most of you probably already know what that is, but it's an organization that helps out families in our community around Christmas time with food drives, toys for children and just other things at the community and those families that are in need, need. So yeah, it's a really great organization and we were really lucky and blessed to be a part of it this year. I know each and every one of us had a good time with it. So what we did before the actual day that we worked directly with Christmas Neighbors, we hosted a food drive at our school and we made it more interactive by having, I think it was all the grades compete against each other? Yeah, all the grades compete against each other. Just like who could bring in the most and who won and all that sort of stuff. So that was really fun. We also, as NHS, made tie blankets and the teachers had their own thing of bringing in wrapping paper and tape for presents. And then the day of Christmas Neighbors or like what we did for it, we went into one of the buildings at Jefferson County Fairgrounds and we helped set up. And then throughout the day, I think we were there for the majority of the day, we helped unload and organize all the donations that were brought in, including our own. And it ended up helping hundreds of family, families and almost 2,000 children in our community. So we were all very, very proud to be a part of that and I hope that it's something that NHS continues to do. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Casey Everson and I'm going to talk about our most recent and biggest fundraiser that we put on this year. It was for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society 2023 Madison Student Visionaries of the Year Campaign, which is a seven-week-long campaign, although it lasted a little longer than seven weeks. But the goal is to help blood cancer patients not only survive but thrive after treatment. And this was very close to all of our hearts because most of us have family members that have been affected by these cancers. So we were able to raise a couple thousand dollars towards this organization to help blood cancer patients not only survive but thrive post-treatment. We put on various fun, various smaller fundraisers within this fundraiser. So you may have seen at local high school basketball games, we put on miracle minutes where we spoke in front of everybody for just a couple minutes, giving a brief introduction about what LLS is and what our campaign is for. And then we went through the stands with buckets and collected money, which we found was a very profitable way. And then we also did a rose fundraiser during Valentine's Day at our school where students were able to purchase a flower and then send it to a classmate with a note if they would like. And then we were also at one of the basketball games, able to get Chick-fil-A to donate mu- to donate food, sandwiches and cookies for us, which was a big hit with students and parents. And then we were also able to throw a Culvers Night to bring the community together and raise money for this organization. And we're hoping that in the future NHS next year can do this again and hopefully succeed even more with the greater numbers that they'll have. Thank you.
And I'll just add a few more things. We got, we've got a great group. Really proud of these guys, the hard work they put in. And Ms. Weldon, thank you for leading us. We've been super proud of everything we've accomplished this year, all the hard work we put into it and just really showing what's close to our heart and what we want to dive into and help, help others with. I think personally, it's been, it's been an amazing experience, much more than I could have ever hoped for or expected. And as I've communicated with the juniors who are going to be taking this, this group on next year, I've really just told them, you're pouring into others. It looks great on resumes. It does. It looks great for college, okay? And I know some of them, that's, that's their drawing factor to, to do it. They put in hard work throughout high school to be able to be eligible for this. But a lot of them might just want to show up and put it on a resume and call it good. But I've encouraged them that as much as you're pouring into others, I, I can't say it enough, you get poured into yourself just by being able to be a light and a joy to others. Veterans Day especially, I made a connection with an older gentleman. It honestly made my whole week. These, these events, you just learn how special people are, how special your community is and it just makes you grateful. So I would say, thank you for your support. Thank you for having us again. And I can field any questions that anyone has.
Yeah, I think it's fantastic your, the things you've described you're doing. How do you go about looking at what options you might have for projects? Do you, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, so again, Ms. Weldon helps a ton with that. She, she will be fielding things from other people. She'll have an idea of different ideas, things we can do. And then we'll really just vote as a group. So I would say a lot of it comes from Ms. Weldon or if we have heard of anything, we always, we have large group meetings, board meetings. We can just bring that up and we'll, we'll take a vote on it, see if it's something we want to do, if we have the resources to be able to do that, the time. Again, there's a lot of freedom in it, so I think that's really important, especially for next year's group. They'll have a ton of people to be able to do that. Yeah, I mean, we just, we have the freedom to do what we, we think we should do or want to do, if that makes sense, yeah.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, it's been great to watch along the years, whether it's a district shareout or in the newspaper and just seeing all of the different things that you've done and brainstorming ideas to get all of the fundraising and various activities that you might do along the way. And I just thank you for your service to the community because I think you're right. As soon as you fill someone else's bucket, your bucket is filled as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
On that note, we're going to excuse Liliana from the rest of the board meeting, do the amount of homework that she has. And I also wanted obviously to put out an extra shout out to Mrs. Weldon, who does a lot of work behind the scenes. And thank you also to Mrs. Heimstreet and Mr. Walsh for coming also in support.
All right. Okay, moving on for to the safety plan.
Yeah, so I know, Ken, you had asked about a safety plan update. And I was trying to think about what, you know, is some of the newest things that we've been doing. So the latest was working with our school nurses on the AED plan update, which is a document that's required to list where all of the AEDs are in the district, which I think kind of spurred an additional conversation. We've been talking about the rec department and what their role is with this as well. And so following up with Ben Dayton today, that we do indeed have a portable AED that the rec department does own, that has been out at the football games when, when they were overseeing the football through rec. And then also it's carried with them out to Wallace Field for softball.
I'm going to have, I would like to have a picture taken, Megan, with the NHS students. Yeah, the board, absolutely, the board. I think.
We'll put that on pause. No, that's fine.
I agree. I want a picture. These are our students. I want to claim you guys.
More pictures. Okay, um, my room's tall. Okay, one, two, three. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, absolutely.
So I, you know, I, I know that the rec department is going to be working on coverage over at Rotary Park as well because we have a lot of soccer activities going on there. So you know, this is not so much just for the students, but obviously the number of adults that attend those functions as well. So other than that, we're kind of on hold a little bit until the summer months because we will be working with the police department, hopefully on some tabletop activities and continuing to strengthen our current safety plan.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, on to Ms. Naylor.
Good evening. All I have tonight is to talk about our Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative. So this is a rebate program that we've been a part of. I think this is going on our fourth year. And it's, they provide bidding services for some of our food and sometimes equipment. So Kathy Coiman has been really happy with the partnership that we've had with them. It's $300 to be a part of the cooperative. And in the past three years, we've gotten rebates anywhere between 1,900 about to over 3,000. So it's been a really great program and it's just on the agenda to be approved, to be a part of that.
And I see that a rebate of 19, almost, almost $2,000 in their second year?
Yes, so in 2020, we had a, or 2021, about 2,000. 22, it went up to 2,800. And then 23, we were just over 3,000. So it's increasing over the years, probably with the more use that we've had.
Super. All right, okay. Any questions?
Just, our, it really looks like a great deal for us. Are most of the districts in the area involved with this?
I know we partnered with Middleton Cross Plains is who, but they're, in that document, there's a list of almost 60 throughout the state that are a part of it, 59 including us.
I was looking at that document, seeing how many there were, and I almost wanted to go back to last year to compare to see, you know, how, because I was like, wow, that is a lot. And then across the state too, you know, from rural to suburban to all over, different people who are part of the co-op. I thought it was a great opportunity for everyone.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Has anyone signed up for comments? All right, we will now move on then to the consent agenda. This month's consent agenda includes the approval of the following: the March 20th regular meeting minutes, April 3rd policy committee proceedings, March, March's treasures report and vouchers and invoices, and the personnel report.
I'll move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Is there any discussion, questions? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Andrea Graham.
Aye.
Kirk Lund.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye. All right, action items. Moving on to the first one, insurance design revision. And this is the revisions that were discussed at the March 20th school board meeting and explained by Al Jaeger from USI. And before, are there any questions or comments to, to discuss before we even ask for a motion?
Just that we have our staff meetings already scheduled for Wednesday. There'll be a virtual one and that will be recorded so that, and then there's two follow-up ones after that so that any staff member or their spouse can access this information. So we want to make sure it's as accessible as possible.
I know I haven't gotten any questions or emails about this from staff or community members. So I guess any insights and.
We have, I mean, we've put out information, but we haven't really gotten, I mean, a few questions here and there, but.
I attended the, the staff benefit committee meeting. And a few of the takeaways that I had from that were just more or less along the lines of like just educating the staff and helping them to understand how it's a great opportunity, just slightly switching the way in which they think and where the money goes for them to be able to pull it.
from. But they seemed to be quite excited about the HSA account and being able to use that money towards their deductible and then have an ultimate growing savings account. So yeah, there were a few questions that they had along the way, but like with anything new, you're always going to have one particular story with each person within a different part, but for the most part, they seemed pretty optimistic.
I should note that we also have our consultants scheduled to do one-on-one meetings with staff after those three meetings that they can sign up and ask personal questions as it relates to HRA, HSA, things like that, that they're not going to want to ask in a group setting.
And that was another thing I shared with some of the employees that were there, the staff members, they were sharing specific situations for themselves. And it was really helpful to everybody else that was there to be able to then relate to like, oh, okay, that's what happened to you and then this is what would happen now. So they were just very relatable. So I think that that will be helpful down the road to use those stories to help train and educate and understand what's to come.
Then I will, I will ask for a motion.
I'll move, excuse me, I'll move the board to approve the insurance design revision as presented.
I'll second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further questions or discussion? All right, hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right, the action is needed for approval of the rebate and agreement with the school nutrition that Tasha just talked about, so.
I'll move the board approve the 66 point, sorry, tickle in my throat, .0301 agreement with Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative for the 2023-2024 school year.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded and coughed after. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right, the board, the next item is a job descriptions and the board has to have job descriptions for each position at the district. And if Tanya wants, or Tasha wants to give any information?
These were just recently written or revised and it does require board policy for any contracted positions, so not all positions in the district need to come before, like support staff wouldn't necessarily need to, but we're just, this is just to bring us into compliance.
I'll move the board approve the job descriptions as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any questions on any of the positions? Any questions on the procedures? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Moving on to the leader in me curriculum, and I'm guessing that we will have a presentation from our middle school, Mr.
Mr. Grundel is presenting instead of Mr. Olson tonight.
Mr. Olson's out today. So, thank you, Board, for all you do. I'm going to give you a little presentation, the brief presentation that we gave to the greater Watertown Community Health Foundation for the grant for Leader in Me for our school. We're excited about it. It's an opportunity for our kids and our staff to grow in their leadership qualities based on the seven habits of highly effective teens and highly effective people, building with yourself first and then growing up to be interdependent as we go. And we think about the middle school years, those are big key components of growth for our students. Where we got here, just a little background, is we have the comprehensive school mental health team with Mr. Woodford, Mr. Olson, we have Alexa Resch that worked in along with Tanya, that went, and who else did this?
And Jamie.
And Jamie.
Eversen.
Sorry, Jamie. That went to, are looking at our mental health within our students and where are areas that we can grow. So we did some surveys with our staff. We also did a staff survey in the middle school. We've gotten the DESA results back, looking at where our students' social, emotional pieces are and where we can grow them. One thing that came back is goal setting and student advocacy, believing that they can do things. And I think this program aligns really well to what we're looking at within our building. It also aligns to our core values that we just implemented this year of kindness, engagement, and leadership. And Leader in Me kind of goes right along with that. So are you clicking through, Megan? Or is someone?
Yeah.
All right. I'm not going to go through this whole thing because it's like 20 minutes long. All right, so the biggest thing is our framework here. And you've got this in your board packet too, is this movement of leadership culture and academics within our school and looking at what is leadership? It is, everyone can be a leader at some point in time in the school and they all have those leadership qualities. And what is potential and what is change and motivation and education within our system? These are all things that we feel value in our school and we need to teach our kids what those look like so they can do those when they get out into the real world or even within our building. So if you look at the leadership, the one things I like is like the service learning approaches, how we're connected with our family. We have some direct lessons for our kids. The culture, we have some lighthouse, we'll be working with other schools around the state that have Leader in Me, so we're going to see some of the best practices that are around there. And then the academics, what does it mean to have like student-led conferences, leadership portfolios? Those aren't going to happen in the first year. This is going to be a three-year rollout and implementation, but these are things where our kids are going to start taking some leadership within our school and our building. And we're really excited about that. Go through there. We can go through this one. And keep going, keep going. All right, perfect, let's go right there. What does this program entail? So what is it? It will start with an all-staff workshops in PD. So it'll be two days in service for our staff on the first, first, well, it'll be in August next year, where they learn about themselves and how they are leaders in the building. Because we can't lead others unless we know how to lead ourselves. So it's going to start with some staff in service in PD. And then we're going to have some coaching sessions, some online PD, we'll have access to content. Actually, this spring, one thing that'll happen is we'll have the measurable results assessment and that'll go out to families and students and faculty, just basically where are we and where should be our goals and focuses over the next two years or three years in the program and student materials. So this is a program that we're really excited about and what is it going to look like when it gets into our building? And so all our fifth graders and all our sixth graders will take Leader in Me as part of their elective or their exploratory wheel. It'll be a required wheel for them, so all fifth and sixth graders will take this. And then our seventh and eighth graders will become an elective course for them to take. So if they choose to take it, our seventh graders get two electives and our eighth graders get three electives. So if they choose Leader in Me, that would be an elective that they can take. Instead of another elective, we'll be getting rid of healthy living as of right now. So, any questions? That's abbreviated. Funding, we got matching funds from the Greater Watertown Community Health Foundation and we've also got funding through the Covey Foundation, has some grants programs with the program that we're using. So we've got basically a lot of matching funds, almost all of it covered through grant money, so.
Did your staff go and see this in action at any other schools that are doing this? Or do you have like coaches from people who have done this before? How does that work to understand it?
I was going to say, a lot of this stemmed from the work that we were doing through the Mental Health Foundation or Mental Health Academy. So when we had met in person with all the districts that were part of the academy across the state, a lot of the districts had mentioned that this was some of the curriculum they were using. This has been around for quite a while, so at a lot of the national conferences, you'll see the reps presenting in the different states on this. And anybody that's familiar with Stephen Covey's work too, it's just been that tried and true, I think, leadership. We've talked a lot about the SEL framework that we currently have in the district and as I, you know, working with the middle school administration, they were really looking for a way, I think, to not only just teach social, emotional learning, but really to teach like the leadership skills that we see in here. So it's much more, I guess, not a passive type of curriculum that the kids are active in their engagement. And really, just from what I've seen, it's very specific in how to teach middle schoolers how to be a leader. And this is actually curriculum that's available from kindergarten all the way up through 12th grade. So if a district so chose, chose, they could, you know, do this K-12. We thought, just with the pilot on the mental health grant, that this would be a natural place to start and the middle school's been looking at their schedule since last summer and really trying to make sure that the electives and the offerings that we have make sense and are helping kids.
Thank you.
I appreciate that you sought out the grant and the matching funds. Is with that, the curriculum, and then it's sustainable after that? Or is there a reoccurring cost after the first year?
Yeah, so it's a three-year, our grant goes out for three years through the Watertown Foundation and it'll cover all of our costs, all of our costs plus what we already planned on putting in for the district. So, yeah, so we have three years of implementation. It does cover the professional development, the student materials, it covers the lighthouse and coaches coming in to coach our teachers from the Leader in Me. So there's lots and lots of supports for our teachers, they're not alone in this process and it's all built into the grant and our funding for it. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the gifts.
Can we make a motion for that one?
I apologize. Moved on.
I'll move the board approve the Leader in Me curriculum as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded and Nate did such a good job, I just skipped it, so. But officially, we cannot, so. Are there any further questions? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote?
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Now, we can move on to the grants. As always, such wonderful support from the community and it never ceases to amaze me each month what this community gives to the school district.
I'll move the board, thank the generous donors for their continued support again this month for our students and programs here in the district. The first is a $1,000 donation to the Lake Mills High School FFA from Carmen Alexander of Wanakee in honor of her husband. The second is a donation of $1,022.78 to the elementary schools PTO from our culvers here in Lake Mills for their fundraisers that they just had. And then also a donation of golf supplies valued at $3,285.53 to the Lake Mills High School Golf Team from Mr. Michael D. King. And his letter stated that he was a former Lake Mills High School graduate and also part of the golf team. So thank you to all of those generous donors.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Hearing no questions, can I have a roll call vote on the motion?
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right, future agenda items.
I should have started out with my contact by congratulating you, Amy, on your reelection to the school board. So with that, we have our reorganization meeting coming up here on Monday, April 24th, which is a meeting where the board reelects its officers along with a few other items. We will be having a workshop meeting right after that with Bob Butler. This is an opportunity for you to think about questions and logistics as it relates to your role as a board member and you can ask him those questions. If there's any topics that you want to make sure that he covers, just email me and I'll pass that along to him as well and he can make sure and maybe cover some of those items a little bit more in depth. And then depending on the outcome of our reorg meeting, because the board calendar is part of that, I know we had discussed shifting the board meetings to the third Monday in May, and third Monday of the month, that that would shift our May meeting then already. But at our May meeting, we annually do our student recognition, our top 10 students at the high school, which is part of a capital conference ceremony. We will also be celebrating Liliana because that will be her last meeting as our board representation. And then our years of service and retirees are also recognized at that meeting. Action items will be our just regular annual contract renewal, CISA II contract, our healthcare nursing services contract, final reading of the policies, we'll be approving summer school staff. And then we do have a request from our high school Spanish teacher about a trip to Guatemala and Belize.
All right. Are there any other items that are, things that would want to be put on the May meeting or future meetings that come to mind at this point? If not, then we'll email Tanya and we can work out with it. So, all right, moving on, we will ask for a motion for an executive session.
I move the board adjourn the executive session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, 1CE and F considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically, A, approval of executive session meetings, B, high school dean of students and athletic director contract.
I'll second.
Okay, we do need a roll call vote to enter executive session.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right.
Depending on your line of questions that you have for me, I'm just requesting that Megan and Tasha be in the room. I don't see this being a long closed session. I just wanted to be able to provide you the opportunity. I know Dave's probably in there if you had any questions.
Is this being recorded? Is the green lights? Okay, so then, do we need to either, okay, can we have it stop recording for this closed session?